The Town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that is located on Treaty Six territory in Meatee Nation Region Number Four. These are the traditional territories and ancestral lands of indigenous peoples, including the Plains Cree First Nations, Asinawachi Winewak Rocky Mountain First Nations, Stony, Sutina, Nakota, Denny-Suline, Salto, Mountain Meete, Meetchee, and many other communities that continue to enrich the land on which the Town of Hinton was established. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order at four o'clock. Counsel, any additions or deletions to today's agenda? Seeing none, administration?
Sir, if it pleases counsel, administration would seek to remove item six point one under action items, and I am prepared to provide a bit of background on that request.
If you may provide that background today at this meeting.
I could speak to it right now.
Yeah, if you, if you may.
If I could, we have confirmed in discussions with our financial institution. And just a reminder to counsel, this was to bring the borrowing line of credit for two thousand twenty-two back. Some questions were raised earlier in the day from one of our counselors, counselor Taylor. We did speak with our relationship advisor at A T B, and A T B has said they would be fine with this bylaw, the way it was currently adopted until the end of this year. And so there is no need to bring it back. And if I could, the distinction would be the proposed bylaw would move the interest rate to prime plus one percent. The current bylaw is prime less a quarter percent. So I would just as soon hold on to prime less a quarter, and that is agreeable to our relationship representative from Alberta Treasury Branch.
Thank you for that, I C O Hanlon. With that, counsel, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel LeBeurche.
Move to drop, sorry, move to adopt the agenda for regular meeting.
Evans, as amended.
Thank you, Counsel LeBeurche. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor, any debate? And we will be voting traditionally for these motions. All those in favor? That's passed unanimously. That'll bring us to our council minutes for adoption. Counsel, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we adopt regular council meeting minutes of May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the committee of the whole meeting minutes for May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Counsel Haas. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor, any debate or questions? Seeing none, we will vote traditionally, all those in favor. That's passed unanimously. That'll bring us to our citizens a minute with counsel, your opportunity to come forward, state your name, any comments, good, bad, indifferent. The floor is yours for a minute. Seeing no appetite from Ms. Charlton. Was there anyone who had subscribed online to join us virtually for a minute with counsel?
No, there's not.
Thank you for that, Ms. Davy Campbell. That'll bring us to our action items for this evening. The first one now is Town of Hinton Strategic Plan two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five, I C O Hanlon.
Thank you, sir. Through you to all of counsel on page twenty-one of your agenda package. And this is the opportunity for counsel to adopt its two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five strategic plan. This is in follow-up from the session held with T S I. That was Erica Thomas and Doug LaGore. That was held April twenty-third and twenty-fourth. It is a follow-up to the committee of the whole meeting, May twenty-fourth, at which counsel had a preliminary opportunity to review the finalized strategic plan. And it is now attached. And the next steps following the adoption of this would be to come together and as is currently tentatively scheduled is meet on June twenty-second with senior administration to, in essence, roll out this plan with administrative support. And then administrative, that same administrative team, the following day will meet with our facilitators and the development of a tactical plan to implement counsel's strategic vision. And with that, I am available for any questions counsel may have.
Thank you, I C O Hanlon. Counsel? Any questions, comments, direction? Counsel LeBeurche.
Um, once the tactical side of this is, is done, is that something that'll be presented to counsel then? Is that something that we'd have a look at after it's complete?
Yes, that would be my intention.
Thank you, Counsel LeBeurche. Counselor Taylor?
I have one possible amendment, but after we approve this possibly with one amendment, then the communications would go out on this?
Sir, through you to Counselor Taylor, that is correct. We'd be looking to promote this through our various means and advertise this, push this out.
Thank you.
Let me go ahead with mine. Oh, um, so, uh, I think that because we all talked about this in a session, then in order to amend it, it should come through a motion like we talked about in, in, in-house. And I'd like to think that this is kind of a living document capable of some sort of changes as things change, and that it's not just static and it's gonna collect dust. So the one amendment is related to one of the comments we got from Mr. Kreiner that I mentioned before, and it doesn't really think it has to do more with counsel, and that's that counsel work to enhance relationships with the provincial government. That's not to say that we're not doing a good job of what we do now, or that when we meet with them, those are very satisfactory things. It's just that some of the things we're facing with the water treatment plant, others coming up, that we could consciously work to, to do that. So I was, I was going to put an amendment that for the strategic plan, that the town worked to enhance relationships with the provincial government. So if you vote on it, that it is an amendment, that's just my thought.
So if I may, we don't currently have a motion up, so we would have to put the, the recommended motion up first and then an amendment, I C O Hanlon? Okay. So Counselor Taylor, would you like to put the recommended motion first and then add your amendment to it?
Uh, that, that counsel adopts the attached Town of Hinton Strategic Plan two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and add an amendment that says this.
Correct.
Okay, yes, I'll do that.
We'll give Ms. Davy Campbell a moment to put a motion on the floor and a amendment, and we will deal with the amendment first, and then go to the main motion once that's been decided.
Counselor Taylor, how does that amendment?
Oh, the amendment would be that.
It's up on the screen. Did you want town or counsel?
Just counsel. That's I think that's good enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Would you like to speak to that more?
No, I think I did enough. I think it's an area where we could work more in the future on because of some of this stuff and the opportunities you have coming up. And I'm not saying that we're not when we do talk to them, but that we've got of opportunities where we could consciously with future.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. I have Counsel Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm not against this, I guess. In my mind, though, and I guess this is a question to the administration. I think that there's many current matters that are in the strategic plan, and I see this more as a tactical to accomplish some of the things. And so I guess my question is, and it doesn't mean I'm going to vote against this, but I'm curious as to I know that administration is having a tactical, is it also a part of the process that counsel has a tactical plan as well to try to work with with the strategic plan in conjunction with what's administration doing?
Sir, through you to Counsel Haas, to, to all of counsel. It is actually my understanding in speaking with the, with our facilitators is this is counsel's tactical document, so to speak. And so I would respectfully suggest that it wouldn't be inappropriate. My suggestion would be that the proposed amendment find its way to strategic priority three, which is organizational effectiveness. And it could be added as in there. In terms of administration's tactical plan, as indicated earlier, that will come back to counsel. Counsel will see an opportunity or will have an opportunity to review how administration looks to implement this, but I don't think it would be inappropriate to clarify this matter as an amendment.
Okay, I appreciate that. And based on that, yeah, I'm, I'm not, not an against. I mean, always having some provincial relationships, of course, with ministers and thing, and, and her current government and whatever government comes later is important and, and it moves our community forward. So I'll, I'll be in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel McGee?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, for myself, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of this. I think we've seen past examples where the more our provincial partners are aware of what our current issues are and what challenges are facing us without having to go over them in advance. Uh, that just, you know, it benefits us in the long run. So providing we work with our M L A and our deputy ministers and ministers to advocate for the town, I you know, having that strong relationship is just going to make that easier. So I, I look forward to supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McGee. For myself, I actually have a friendly amendment for Counselor Taylor. I actually liked the original wording that was provided. Uh, that counsel and administration work to enhance relationships with the provincial government, and this is my rationale. Um, a lot of times, whether it's A E P grants, working with the provincial government, when administration is looking to employ in, or deploy our strategic plan, a lot of their um, time is spent potentially working with the provincial government. So to me, at the top, it should indicate also that counsel works towards it. And administration has a clear understanding that our expectations are that uh, when there's an issue or there's, whether it's working for a C M H C grant, et cetera, et cetera, that they know that working their relationship with the provincial government is equally as important. So would you be amenable to that friendly amendment, Counselor Taylor? Okay, perfect. So I'll give that Ms. Davy Campbell a moment to oh, perfect. And with that, I, I support this. I think this really expands the scope, and it's important for us as a council uh, to continue to leverage our relationships and, and make them better. Uh, Counsel Haas?
Um, yeah, thank you. Just a quick, I guess, process question as well, because I C O Hanlon mentioned this already, where it fits into this. So is that something that administration, because we'll be adopting this, I guess, as long as counsel is where uh, where it's going to be. Um, I think you said organizational effectiveness is where you see something like this, but I just want to make sure that counsel agrees on where it also goes. Because once we, once we adopt or if, if we pass this, then it's then it's, 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 yeah, it's in stone. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I heard the comment a little bit earlier about a living document, and I would agree. It is a living document that can be reviewed and brought back to counsel with amendments in the future. Um, just a reminder to counsel and to those joining us online. Council's four strategic priorities for the years two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five are economic development, community services, organizational effectiveness, and infrastructure. Uh, it, it was simply my suggestion. I felt that this amendment most directly fit under organizational effectiveness, but I'm open to the direction of counsel on the matter.
Thank you for that, I C O Hanlon. Counsel LeBeurche?
Um, yeah, as, as soon as you said that, it made sense to me. I mean, I think it impacts all of these others, but operationally, I think that that's where, that's where it makes the most sense to me anyhow.
Thank you, Counsel LeBeurche. Uh, counsel, we have an amendment on the floor. That'll be the only thing we're speaking to or voting on. Uh, any further debate before I call this the question? Seeing none, we will go to our voting tab.
Mayor Michael says everybody voted, sorry.
I, I only know when you put it up on the screen.
Did, did it come up on your play?
Uh, yeah, individually, I can only see individually right now, or usually it comes up on the screen from last week, and we, we can see all the voting ones. And once they're all filled, I close the voting. Look. Okay, I think it was Reese.
Sorry, only had one person that shows that voted on here.
Can we please re-enter the votes, perhaps?
Give me one moment.
Administration, any updates? Should I ask counsel to revote?
Yes, please.
Please.
Please. Okay.
Sir, we're just having a bit of difficulty bringing it up. You all have voted, so the voting is.
Right here, so it's passed.
Okay, well, voting is closed and the, that was carried unanimously. Yes. Uh, that'll bring us to our main motion, uh, counsel. Uh, any debate questions? I'll just give Ms. Davy Campbell a moment to combine the two.
Mayor Michaels, are you wanting to just, uh, that this motion, the number two that's on the?
So we just, we just did the amendment part, so now we need the main motion attached along with this to vote on.
You'd like it attached with this?
Well, that's what we're voting on. Yeah, it would be the recommended action followed up by this portion.
Unfortunately, we're having some technological issues with the voting mechanism, so.
So I'll, I'll, I'll call this the question. If we can just get ahold of Gary, though, to come come here for the future ones, but counsel, um, any further debate or questions regarding the motion on the floor? Counselor Taylor?
Um, I only mention this because this is in the Town of Edson's strategic plan. I'm not suggesting this is an amendment. I'm just suggesting that we talk, think about it. They have ensured the town's emergency preparedness as it relates to wildfire readiness is current and remains current. So that's in their strategic plan. That's not in our strategic plan. And I mean, Edson is not surrounded by forest the way we are surrounded by forest. But is this something that we want to consider? I don't know. I just asked that because I noticed that that's something potentially that they have that we don't have. I'm just interested if counsel has an opinion on that.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, any? Counsel LeBeurche?
Well, um, I would suggest that that's probably a tactical. I don't, I don't know. Um, due respect, Edson, I don't know that that's a, a strategic um, consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel LeBeurche. Counsel, any further debate questions or question, Counsel Haas?
Yeah. Go back.
Now I'm on.
Oh, sorry. One more time.
Just to comment on that, I, I agree, and I think we have to be careful that again, we, we spent a day and a half together and, and pulled out what we did at the time, what was important. Um, you know, and, and I'm sure there's lots of things we could probably add, but I, I agree with Counsel LeBeurche that I mean, we've got updates in the past in regards to, we've had, uh, we have to have a meeting uh, once a year, I believe, as emergency preparedness as a, as a group, as, as the uh, the committee, because all of counsel is on committee for, for that. So um, I think it's an ongoing thing that our protective services and fire chief work on all the time. So I wouldn't see a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Haas.
It's unanimous. Right here, where it says five responses.
And it's, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, so that is a thousand. Counsel, we, questions? See, I'm going to call a five-minute recess so we can look at. This, so I'll no reconvene. If he was.
He's not.
Is it because it keeps saying you were thinking both we have to
Probably.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to reconvene this meeting at four twenty-seven. Uh, my apologies to anyone who's live streaming this or um, watching it at another time. We're having technical difficulties without our I T person here. We're just going to go back to the traditional way of voting until we could figure out um, uh, the best practices in the future. So with that, counsel, we are still on six point one, Town of Hinton Strategic Plan two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five. Two motions, or a motion has been passed with an amendment. Anything further to consider, or are we moving forward? Seeing none, thank you, administration and counsel. That'll bring us to six point two, which is the Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw eleven seventy-three and appointments of designated clerk and chair, I C O Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to all of counsel. I'll turn this over to our Strategic Services Manager, and Heather will take us through this report.
Thank you, C E O Hanlon, through to the remainder of counsel. Good evening, everyone. Um, as you are aware, um, the town has historically had a regional assessment review board um, shared between the Town of Hinton, Jasper, Edson, and Grand Cash. However, with the recent dissolution of Grand Cash into, um, the M D of Greenview, we've had to revise our bylaw. Um, we've also had the Improvement District Twelve reach out and ask to be included within our Regional Assessment Review Board. Therefore, um, this matters before you today to kind of put a bow on that. Um, we also need to appoint a new clerk, as I will be uh, departing the Strategic Services position effective June twentieth. And we do not currently have our Legislative Services Coordinator who would typically uh, conduct this work. We have trained Ms. Wade. Um, she's received her provincial training, so she will conduct those functions for two thousand twenty-two. Um, you will note that at the top of your report, under the recommended action section, the first action to rescind the bylaw can be removed. No need to, uh, do that tonight, as you will notice in section nineteen point two. Uh, the, the current bylaw eleven twenty-three will rescind upon the passing of, um, eleven seventy-three this evening. Um, I'd also like to draw your attention to section four point nine, which does demonstrate the inclusion of uh, Improvement District Twelve and the removal of Grand Cash. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Counsel, any uh, questions, directions, comments? What would we like to do with this? Counselor Taylor? Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, Counsel Haas?
Okay.
Counsel, any further debate questions before I call this the question? Seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel repeal the Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw eleven twenty. Oh, uh, you picked a different one. My apologies. That counsel give the Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw eleven seventy-three first reading. Counsel, all those in favor? That's passed unanimously. Counsel? Counsel Haas?
I'd like to move, counsel, give the Regional Assessment Review Board. Oh, pardon me. That counsel give the Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw number eleven seventy-three second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel, any debate questions? Seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor. That's passed unanimously. Counsel, Counsel McGee?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that counsel give unanimous consent for third reading of the Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw number eleven seventy-three.
Thank you, Counsel McGee. Counsel. Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Any debate or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's passed unanimously and just pointing out our mic system has also changed with you having the ability to put your mic on by yourself. So just please, when you want to speak, just press it. I won't control that at all. Thank you very much. Counsel. Counsel Laberge.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move that council give third reading to the regional assessment review board by law eleven seventy three.
Thank you, Counselor Laberge. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Any debate questions? Seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor. That's passed unanimously. Counsel, Counselor Hoss.
I'd like to move that council appoint Alexa Wade as Hinton's West Yellowhead Regional Review Board Clerk effective immediately through to April thirtieth, twenty twenty two to carry out the administrative functions of the Hinton's Board Activities.
Thank you, Counselor Hoss. Counsel, any debate or questions? Seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor. That's also passed unanimously. Counsel, Counselor McGoon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to move the council appoint Paul Butler as the designated chair for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board effective immediately through April thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counsel, any debate or questions? Counselor Taylor.
So I've got no information on this individual in the package at all. I'm getting asked to appoint him. How do I know he's? But any sort of qualifications?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Taylor, through to the remainder of council. Each year we are required to appoint a designated chair and a designated clerk as a region. So these individuals have their training. And they are appointed by both Jasper, Edson and ourselves. It is not our turn as Hinton to provide those individuals as designated clerk and chair. So this year they're splitting it between Jasper and Edson due to our limited staffing resources at this time.
So to be qualified, they just have training. Both of them have taken the training. So they're qualified.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, any further debate or questions? Seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor. That's passed unanimously. Counsel, anything? Counselor Hoss.
I'd like to move the council to point Tricia Papke as the designated clerk for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board effective immediately through to April thirtieth, twenty twenty two, three.
Thank you, Counselor Hoss. Counsel, again, we have a motion on the floor. Any debate? Seeing a non occult question, all those in favor? That's passed unanimously. Counsel. Uh, just to confirm with administration, the one to repeal is good to not make a motion?
Sir, that is correct. It's automatically repealed with the adoption of the new bylaw.
Perfect. Counselor Laberge.
Um, I, right. I didn't, I didn't pick that out before, but the spelling errors are going to come out of the bylaw. Yes, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Laberge. Counsel, anything further for this item? Seeing none. Thank you, administration and council. That'll bring us to six point three for this evening. Proposed twenty twenty two economic development budget expenditures ICO handling.
Thank you, sir. Through you to all of council. I'm on page forty six of your agenda package. As council is aware, this has been the unique year in the town of Hinton for economic development activity. And with the departure of our economic development officer and the current situation in the twenty twenty two operating budget. Administration has taken on the role of, of working with some of our local groups, agencies and partners to identify the best possible ways forward with the identified budget for twenty twenty two. Just as a way of reminder, May, May third, twenty twenty two, council administration confirmed that the remaining economic development operating budget for this year was just over a hundred and five thousand dollars, one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and six dollars. We are committed to expend these budgeted funds appropriately consistent with the goals and objectives we believe are in place for economic development and support in the town of Hinton since the beginning of May. Administration, that would be myself, has provided support in the amount of approximately sixteen thousand dollars in various smaller supports. When I say smaller, I've typically under three thousand dollars and meeting the tests of, of what we want to accomplish here. That's been expended here. What comes before council tonight is proposed expenditures that are a little larger in nature, and I committed to bring these back to the attention of council and just to make you aware of these before continuing. It's been done in the past cooperatively between the town of Hinton and Mr. Drew. He has requested a four thousand dollar contribution towards the operation of the Autumn Music Festival and administration is support is supportive of that as we believe it attracts visitors and tourists to Hinton, enhances and supports shopping and other retail activities in the town. And so that is one that I am planning, that administration is planning to support. Uh, number two is hashtag hint and first public market. This is an opportunity in the local farmer's market that runs for nine Saturdays, starting July ninth to September third of the year. This is through and with the support and assistance of Hinton District Chamber of Commerce and an independent contractor. The request through the chamber is four thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars. Administratively, we are seeking to support this again, as we believe it attracts visitors and tourists to Hinton and enhances and supports local shopping and retail activities. The third is a proposed, this is coming from community, Community Futures West Yellowhead. And that is the hidden business retention and expansion project. This is a, a multi-jurisdictional effort that's seeking to raise just over forty five thousand dollars and work with an independent contractor on business retention and business expansion in these various communities. It's proportional. It's based on population and the ask sought from community futures is nine thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. The three together would total eighteen thousand five hundred and five dollars and would see our remaining economic development funding for twenty twenty two reduced to approximately seventy thousand five hundred dollars. I can say that administration is working closely with a couple of other groups that are looking to bring some proposals possibly as soon as the June twenty first meeting, as we would like to identify the funding opportunities of the available monies through the balance of the year. The recommendation coming from administration is that council accept the twenty twenty two economic development budget report update identifying three expenditures as information. With that, sir, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, ICO Hanlon. Counsel, any direction, questions? Counselor McGoon.
Uh, thank you. Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you.
No, you took it off. Thank you. There you go. Oh, now. Driving me crazy. There's counsel here. My apologies.
No, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my question for administration is really, I suppose related to what happens after this. In principle, I'm supportive of these. These three proposals. However, moving beyond this, do we have a plan for communication to the community? If this is the intention moving forward so that other folks, other organizations could bring potential ideas or economic opportunity ideas to the town for, for consideration?
Administration?
So, sir, through you to Counselor McGoon. Certainly, that would be the intent and, and we are administratively seeking those options and opportunities. We are open to others coming forward. The intent of this is to, is indeed is unique in its nature. The expenditure of the twenty twenty two economic development budget is strictly speaking, operational in nature. Administratively, we are more comfortable on larger dollar items in, in at least making council aware of what we're investigating and what we're looking to support and ensure it aligns with that vision of council at least.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counselor Taylor.
Uh, related to what you're talking about, Counselor McGoon. What we're talking about now is supporting sort of one-off events instead of developing an overarching policy. And that enhances economic development, which I think will come and puts money circulating in the town. So I'm referring to our support of the music field. The Wild Mountain Music Festival. In first market, the autumn festival, and I know that the town's helping to support the roller derby when that comes. So guess the two questions are. We're going to have a overarching economic development policy come that'll incorporate everything because we're just switching over. And the second question would be. Why wouldn't we, if we're going to be approving these kind of events as one-off events, why wouldn't we develop an overarching policy for it? Maybe a special events initiative fund? That gives funds based on the participant that comes from out of town and actually spends overnight in the town and spends hotel bills. Other communities have that sort of thing. You know, something that funds in the range of eight to ten dollars per participant. We're going to keep doing this kind of thing, something that could be fair to everybody that walks through the door and we set aside a set amount of money for it.
ICO Hanlon.
Sir, thank you. Through you to Counselor Taylor, to all of council. I think that's certainly something we should be taking a look at in our twenty twenty three budget in terms of an initiative coming forward. As I alluded to earlier, this is, is unique for twenty twenty two in the town. I, I suppose I'm a little concerned. We're establishing administratively a bit of a precedent and that we will not have likely the same amount of dollars in twenty twenty three to support these groups. And we've been very clear with the groups that I've been in discussion with that it's not fair and nor should they be expecting ongoing support in future years because I don't have that budget discussion yet with council and the adoption of the twenty twenty three budget. If I could, in terms of a policy, I think that's a very good idea. Administration would be seeking direction for future years around what the economic development policy regarding the town of Stony Plain and, and excuse me, the town of Hinton and what the future looks like for that. And particularly when we take a look, there's, there's a significant portion of council strategic plan is built upon economic development. And so tactically, how we move that forward and how we achieve that.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor Hoss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you saying this is kind of a one-off thing for twenty twenty two because I'm there's a risk, a danger I'd see in this is it's very similar to the community grant program. You know, in the community grant, you know, there's, there's a application process, whereas this is a little bit different. So I appreciate you saying that and that. You know, we will be looking at this for the future in twenty twenty three. You know, because I, I agree with Counselor Taylor. I mean, we need to look at, at this economic development more as a policy and as a community and how do we develop that? So, but yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Hoss. Counsel, any appetite for a direction? Counselor McGoon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll.
Yeah, now it's asking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that, let me see here. I just have to get the right one up. Sorry, I guess I have a question for administration. Uh, the recommendation number one, that council accept this identifying three expenditures as information. Uh, is that, would that execute these three recommendations?
Sir, if I could throw you to Counselor McGoon to all of council, yes. And, and again, because, because this is operational, because it's a bit, bit unique. I, I'm not technically looking for your permission, so to speak. I, I want you to be aware of it and, and that's why it's an information item.
Thanks. Thanks for that clarification. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm uncomfortable with making recommendation number one is motion that council accept these, this twenty twenty two economic development budget report update identifying three expenditures as information. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counsel, any debate? Counselor Taylor?
Meeting is going to be short, so I'll ask this question. The second item on the initiatives, four thousand five hundred for nine Saturdays. That works out to like five hundred dollars a Saturday. What's included in that cost?
Sir, if I could throw you to Counselor Taylor and in, in the request, there is a budget breakdown and I'll read that into the record is so there is tent rentals. So there's a one marquee tent set up all summer. Four ten, four ten by ten foot tents to be set up when required for, through, through the nine Saturdays. The three thousand dollars is to cover the contracted coordinator fee that takes reservations for the market set up and take down, working with the vendors and social media marketing. Three hundred and sixty dollars is, is actually based on last year's quote for insurance liability for a maximum of thirty vendors. So we'll be looking to ensure it's properly or adequately insured. And five hundred dollars towards marketing for a total budget of four thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars.
So we charge them for the tent rental. And then we give them a grant for the tent rental. Is that what you're saying?
Okay. Sorry, that is correct, sir.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, any further questions or debate? Seeing none, I'll call to question that council accepted twenty twenty two economic development budget report update identifying three expenditures as information. Counsel, all those in favor? That's passed unanimously. Counsel, any appetite for the second recommendation? Counsel or Counselor Taylor, you? No, no.
No, no. I, I apologize, sir. There is no need for the second recommendation. I should not have included it there.
Okay.
It's an option.
Okay, perfect. Counsel, anything further for this item? Seeing a none. Thank you, administration and council. That'll end our action items for this evening and bring us to our council reporting. And I will start on my left with Counselor McGoon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counselor Hoss.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to let the public know, it's already been out there, but we successfully hired a new library manager. And her name is Sharon Shot or Shannon Shot, sorry. She was a librarian at the, and she's now been promoted, moved up to the manager position. So that's good. Was able to attend the, this year's FCM in Regina. And it was a great conference, a couple of takeaways that I took from it is just a heads up, but the federal government is working on a housing accelerated fund. So the details are still being worked on and what the program will look like. But it's, it's going to again look at affordable housing in our communities. So there was a discussion, one of the leaders talked about they're advocating currently right now for affordable in a couple of cities that they're using affordable. The, the cat is twenty eight hundred dollars. Uh, another city is like twenty two hundred dollars and, and they're not, not comfortable with that being affordable. So they're looking at advocating to cut that in half. They're also looking at, you know, how many units will be, it's inclusionary, they call it inclusionary housing. So identifying so many units in a, in a build in a residential development and how many are affordable. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of details to happen, but they're looking forward to making that public. The other thing, I guess the biggest thing that I took away or one of the biggest things is, is from coast to coast to coast, everybody's dealing with the same issues currently. Housing is, is one of the biggest issues that all, all communities, all municipalities, county, urban, rural, everyone is dealing with. The other is transit. Transit is also a very big topic in both urban, but especially in the rural areas where there is no transit currently. So there's some initiatives there, a lot of talk on inflation. And, you know, taxing our residents to try and, you know, compensate for that. And this, the costs of everything rising, we heard from Nunavut area in particular. And this, the costs of everything rising, we heard from Nunavut area in particular. And everything that they've they've planned infrastructurally has been basically scrapped. It's just too much to get the materials up there. I mean, their gas price is up there two fifty right now. And then just get the lumber and then all the materials they need. So everything that they had planned is is just on hold, and whether it's even going to happen or not, they're not certain. So the other thing that came from that then too is with all these dollars, every, both federally and provincially, everybody dealing with the same issues. You know, there's going to be a big fight for all of the grants, all of the opportunities that are out there. So we already saw the rapid housing, you know, being oversubscribed to and having to change things. So that's something that, you know, all the parties talked about the money that's available, but there are so many people that need that money in in communities that who knows what it's going to look like. So so that's just some of the things I was able to take part in in some of the or most of, I didn't go on any of the tours, but we took part in the the different workshops sessions. There was on Equity Lens when budgeting, talked about how, you know, sometimes we look at transit, we look at FCSS programs, we look at things like that to cut funding in those areas because they had not seen as essential. So this was an opportunity to talk about is you have to look at all all departments, you know, and 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 look at them through the lens that who is it affecting? You know, if we if we decrease this, then who is it affecting and not just looking at the bottom line? So I think that's important. Also went to a building anti-ricet equitable and inclusive municipalities. So talking more about getting other people involved in municipalities committees from all across, you know, our communities. So how do we go about doing that? And went to a work-life balance thing too, but then we had the fire alarm go, so I only had half of that because we all got evacuated. So anyway, so that's, you know, a few highlights from it. Regina, great facility, huge facility, brand new. We were at the Mosaic Stadium that was built in the in the International Trade Center that was connected to that. So really, really good facility as well. So the other thing I just want to mention real quick, and I didn't, but, you know, the strap plan, appreciate that it's been carried this evening. We can start moving forward. And I again, got to say that, you know, of years of last term compared to this strap plan, I believe, was the most effective. I really like the document. It's to the point. And I'm looking forward to the tactical procedure process now. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Laberge?
Anything to report?
Thank you, Counselor Laberge. Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, a few things. First of all, I think good job to communications on the communications they put out on the temporary sign. Signboard. I thought you took potential issue round into a very positive communication piece. So I think that was whoever did that did a really good job. I thought that was good. I went to a meeting with the Evergreen School Board as a sole counselor there with Paul. And the thing that they seem to be asking for, correct me if I'm wrong, was the help advocating for special services that they're missing. Don't know how we do that, but seem to be what they're like, mental health services and other kind of services that are hard to get in a small town. If there's, is that correct?
Sir, I believe that captures the the difficulty in in attracting and retaining mental health supports in the hidden area in the in the west end of Yellowhead County. And so anything that could benefit, I think the overall comment was anything that could benefit and help the town of Hinton would also help them in attracting and retaining those sorts of supports.
Thank you. And I went to the senior lunch, which was extremely well attended. I'm just curious, maybe we're getting more and more seniors, or maybe the age range was changed. But congratulations to Bill Bulger for his achievement at the awards and all the others that were nominated for the excellent volunteer work they do in the community. And I also won the door prize and the chicken strips were crispy and delicious, and there were lots of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Taylor, and congratulations on your victory there. I also attended FCM with Counselor Haas. The facility was huge, probably six hundred meters wide. So Tim Hortons was on one side and the main, one of the main halls was on the other side. They needed some of those Ella Airport kind of walkers. Serious, I'm going to write them and it's so far, people were being shuttled. It was like too big. Yeah, I was, actually, I felt bad for a lot of individuals that have to walk often, so it was just way too far. But overall, a very good, just to add to Counselor Haas, the Housing Accelerator Fund is going to be four billion dollars. I know our administration has done has stepped up compared to to prior years for grants, CMHC, et cetera. And there's opportunities. And and this is outside of our purview on deciding, but our federal government is taking an approach to accelerate the housing portfolio dwellings across Canada at whatever cost, which is debatable. And and I understand it might not be everyone's cup of tea on how they are doing it. But the reality is, is this is what they're choosing to do. And that money is going to be spent in either Hinton or other municipalities, regardless of the philosophy, if you believe in that's the best thing to do. But that is, that is their approach. They are going to pay premium to build homes fast. And we have an opportunity in Hinton, and I encourage and I thank our administration for what they've done recently. And to challenge Council and Administration that in the near future, we have to tap into that four billion dollars in other programs. Green Municipal Fund was mentioned so many times. Any piece of capital equipment, I believe we should be looking at the viability of applying and getting up to fifty percent capital cost paid for for making the whatever the capital equipment is useful in our community at fifty cents on a dollar. This is something that the federal government again is continuing to at the forefront. And those were two of the major funding models that we're aware of that are continue to 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 be a big part of our, I guess, effectiveness, you know, when it comes to our capital budgeting, that we have to tap into these things, they have to be a priority. The trade show was great, automated grass cutting. There's an opportunity in our community, soccer fields. It's becoming commonplace, a device twenty five thousand dollars can do up to six acres. And that could maybe free up staff, ideas like that. But that lends me to my next comment. And and this was shared about in FCM quite a bit by many municipalities is that more staff should be going to to these. These trade shows are made for administrative staff for their ideas and stuff. And some municipalities are starting to bring more staff, and I encourage Council in to have our conversations with our our CAO about what does that look like long term? Because there's a lot of value in staff going to these events. That's it to add on FCM. Yeah, congratulations. Thank you, Counselor Taylor, for bringing up Mr. Bill Bulger. He's given quite a bit to our community and for him to win the Senior's Lifetime Achievement Award is great news. Earlier today, I had a meeting with our neighbors in Edson, White Court, Yellowhead County with Minister Shandrell regarding the provincial policing services and their approach. And I know there's some discontent to some extent with the approach the province is taking. One key takeaway, Minister Shandrell made it kind of clear that there is an appetite from the federal government to get away from the RCMP, which is a little bit different than what I've heard in the past. So I think that's a focal point now is to understand where does where does the federal government want to go? Where do we as municipalities want to go? And what will the provincial government do? And we have to marry the two because I believe there's a disconnect in today's conversation was a kind of eye opening on some of the motives. And if so, then I would highly encourage the provincial government to communicate and brand that better to municipalities, so we know what they're fighting for and hence maybe avoid some of these conversations that if we're on the same page and we're actually pushing towards something the feds want to do, then let's have that conversation explicitly. So that that was quite interesting. So I'm sure we'll have more conversations in the near future regarding that. In a quick update on our CAO recruitment, we are still at the long list process, but we're looking to finalize that. Over eighty people interested or applied for the position as of last Friday and more to come in the next coming week. And then we will be shortlisting it hopefully within two weeks. And then we'll have, you know, further meetings with Council in order to look at shortlisting that and then setting interviews. So no specific timeline, but in speaking to Mr. Rick Vogel, hopefully by this coming Friday, we'll have a better timeline on when the shortlisting can be done. And that is all for me. ICO Handling?
Thank you, sir, and certainly do appreciate the speed of today's meeting and appreciate Council. And and with that in mind, I will for for anybody viewing at home or for Council members themselves, just a reminder, it is our FCSS open host this evening. So that's at eight twenty one Switzer Drive at five thirty. There's sandwiches, there's opportunities for, I'm not sure if there's chicken fingers, sir, but sorry, I'll, but an opportunity for for us to get out and and see the good work that FCSS supports do throughout our community. Bit of background, I I do just want to thank all of the administrative team and our and our partners at at West Fraser. Over this past weekend, we had a a maintenance issue with our water system. I do want to just stress that the the safety of the water was never in question that was distributed in the community. So there was a matter that had to be resolved that required that we shut down the treatment of water for over twenty four hours. We did put out a request for individuals to voluntary ration and restrict their water use. And we did unfortunately have to shut down the outdoor spray park. But we we never saw, to the best of my knowledge, we never saw our reservoirs drop below forty percent. And we were then able to resolve the the maintenance issue confirmed with Alberta Environment, the water quality and Alberta Health Services, the water quality that then allowed us to recommence the treatment of water and fill those reservoirs back up. So once again, I thank everybody for their patience over the weekend and their cooperation. I would ask for those that regularly take a look at the town's website, that this Friday, June tenth, you will see the launch of the new website. So this is not a tweak, this is a fully brand new website. And I hope and I've had a chance to take a look at it. It's very good. The homepage is clean, it's neat, it's not cluttered, it's easy to navigate. So I hope that individuals will take an opportunity to take a look at that and just let us know if it's working and and how people feel about it. Thursday and Friday of this week, some of Mr. Rizzo and myself and and a representative from our ISL consultants will be meeting with West Fraser for a two-day workshop this Thursday and Friday. And this is again commencement of discussions around the municipal utilities provided jointly by our 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 group. And just moving to get an agreement in place. Just an update on recruitment, we will be starting recruit interviews tomorrow on Director of Corporate Services, and that will be continuing for for interviews over the next ten days. And so hoping to be able to provide a a response back to Council here soon, just on the success of of those interviews. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ICO Handling. Council, that'll bring us to our correspondence for this evening. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept for information. Counselor Haas?
Please move that we accept council information package for June first, twenty twenty two, please.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Council, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's passed unanimously. Council, any notices of motion? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Counselor Laberge? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much, everyone.